The following are the rules for public comment as stated in Board Policy 23-10. Speakers will be limited to three minutes per person. I will be using a timer and will alert you when your time has expired. I would like to remind you that board members generally will not respond to public comment except to request clarification. Once a speaker's name is called, they will approach the podium and state their issue. The following are not permissible topics for public comment. Matters involving specific personnel or employees of the Board of Education, including employment conditions or complaints about specific employees. Complaints about employees should be directed to the HR department to follow up. Matters involving specific students in the school system, including student disciplinary matters. And obscene or vulgar language not be tolerated, nor will conduct or language that disrupts a meeting or interferes with the Board's ability to carry out its work. As the Board Chairman, I may immediately terminate any comment which violates these rules. And our first public speaker tonight would be Perry Butler. Good evening. And that's your timer right there Perry, okay?
This is, I'm Perry Butler, just referring to my son, Paul Butler. I have a map here that shows that outreach for Jesus is in district, but they won't drop them off. I got ten maps if y'all like them. The eggs is outreach, take care. I've been going on with this for two weeks and haven't gotten anywhere, but I hope they call David's map.
Thanks, thank you. Taylor Lindgren, and I hope I said that correctly. Good evening.
So, my name is Taylor Lindgren and I am a parent of a child recently diagnosed with autism. He is currently in pre-K at the San Hills Children's Center here in town. I wanted to come today to talk about the concerns that I have regarding him attending the public schools in the county beginning next year. Some of these concerns have been brought to my attention by recent events that have happened since the start of this school year, and others by stories and history of other special needs children that have attended schools in this county. My son was diagnosed earlier this year and has been attending San Hills Children's Center since last school year. He has made significant progress in some of the areas since starting here, but still struggles itself. We are working with the exceptional children's department of the school district and my son has a current IEP in place. One of the biggest concerns that I have with this disorder is that it is one of the invisible disorders. You cannot look at him and tell that he struggles with or has difficulty with controlling or expressing emotions in appropriate ways. Our family has encountered others in the current school setting and in the community at large, who have expressed that they don't feel he has a disability due to he does not look like it. They can cause, this can cause a lot of stress and tension, not to mention increasing my son's difficulty with controlling his emotions in an appropriate way when we are confronted by someone with this. I am concerned about making sure that he is able to get from his drop-off point at the school to his classroom safely each day. With the amount of students that are moving through the halls, going to classrooms, the concern is that my son will become overstimulated and will not be able to accomplish this on his own. How can this be addressed where there are no, when there are no paraprofessionals assigned to the students individually? I want to begin working to create plans to address these things now, rather than to wait when he starts school next year. These are not only concerns for my son, but for all the other special needs children in the district, as the recent events at the Not Great Academy have shown us differently.
Ms. Lindgren, can you email a copy of that to...
I have a copy of you, I'll...
That'd be great, thank you.
I would like that, thank you. That's okay, I'll write that on there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Taylor.
How are you?
That's a former student. Her hair was blonde back then though. Taylor, where did I have you? LJ Bell? PE? And the high school?
No, I remember I come to Richmond, but you have me LJ Bell.
Wow. I'm old, I'm old. Who was your favorite PE teacher ever, Taylor?
Keith McKenzie.
Oh, come on!
Paula York.
Thank you. And Gerard Morrison. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Counsel, members, staff, and beloved teachers. My name is Gerard Anthony Morrison from Hamilton, North Carolina, Charlotte Street. I'm the founder for the John Coltrane Music Edutainment Fest. Came up here a couple of times this year, down to the wire. Three weeks, three days, I'm an Army man and a wake-up is what we do. So, love to have you all there, love to spread the word within the infrastructure for the school system, so we go all aspects. We specialize in edutainment, not just entertainment, so that's why I'm more passionate about coming here always. This is our sixteenth year, sweet sixteenth. So, we also have the fashion show component, so we're looking for talent, designers, models, artists, authors, poets, musicians, producers, singers, songwriters. We've got a lot of poets this year, you're gonna be really impressed. And then between the performances, we also deal with community issues, veterans issues, healthcare. The backstories is what I specialize in, we tell the backstories of it, just like Coltrane was born in Hamilton. The church I went to, St. Stevens Amy Zion, his maternal grandfather, Reverend W.W. Blair, was the preacher there. Right before him was Reverend Branch, whose son became the first black commissioned officer for the Marine Corps. So you see how all this stuff is interrelated. Also, tonight, I wanted to talk about the Rosenwall Schools. I'm just curious, who's familiar with the Rosenwall Schools? We had, I told four, still researching. One that really got my heart, I was talking to Daniel Kelly in Hoffman last year. And the Rosenwall School in Hoffman, when they were tearing it down, they used the lumber and everything to build the community center. So it's like looking at recycling right here. But October 5th, one minute on this one.
One minute.
Thank you. Time to run that fast, man. But October 5th, 12 noon, and we're stopping at five this year, we moved it up an hour. Because some of the, uh, seasoned citizens told me that it's getting dark there baby. They don't like being out after dark, and I said, alright, you got obliged. And, but, anytime you want some tours, you see the mural right here? You see the building, my grandfather TJ Higgins, Dr. McQueen and Dr. Wells? They bought the birthplace in the early eighties and took its first breath. We want to make sure that we keep that inspiration going, because inspire comes from Latin. Sparari means to breathe, in is internal, so inspiring people, wanting to join forces and help you, help us, help everybody. Enjoy that musical vibe. And, I forgot the third thing.
Thank you, thank you sir. Thank you, good seeing you again Gerard.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
The Board Chair declares there is a quorum of board members for the September 10th meeting, will the Board please come to order? Will everybody please stand with me for a moment of silence? I have a really good friend who's struggling a little bit right now, was a former, you know, employee of Richmond County Schools, worked closely with him, Bobby Little. He's not doing really well right now, so I just try to keep him in your thoughts and your prayers, and his wife Terry, so just thinking about that. Thank you. Please stand with me, pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, you have the minutes for the Board of Education open minutes for August 13th, the closed minutes for August 13th, and the Board of Education quarterly work session minutes for August 27th. Are there any changes needed to those minutes? If not, the Chair entertains a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Baldwin.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Mason. Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Thank you. Dr. Farrell, are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Alright, so we will adopt the agenda consent of the Board. And our first order of business will be a good old friend, Reverend Mike Patrick. Mike, welcome tonight.
I hope I have this brand introduction...
Well, representing class of seventy-seven.
Absolutely. But first of all, good afternoon and, uh...
Ten maps if y'all like. The eggs is outreach. Take care. I've been going on with this for two weeks and haven't gotten anywhere. But I hope they call David's man.
Thanks, thank you. Taylor Langren, and I hope I said that correctly. Good evening. All right.
So my name is Taylor Langren and I am a parent of a child recently diagnosed with autism. He is currently in pre-K at the San Hills Children's Center here in town. I wanted to come today to talk about the concerns that I have regarding him attending the public schools in the county beginning next year. Some of these concerns have been brought to my attention by recent events that have happened since the start of this school year, and others by stories and history of other special needs children that have attended schools in this county. My son was diagnosed earlier this year and has been attending San Hills Children's Center since last school year. He has made significant progress in some of the areas since starting here, but still struggles itself. We are working with the exceptional children's department of the school district and my son has a current IED in place. One of the biggest concerns that I have with this disorder is that it is one of the invisible disorders. You cannot look at him and tell that he struggles with or has difficulty with controlling or expressing emotions in appropriate ways. Our family has encountered others in the current school setting and in the community at large, who have expressed that they don't feel he has a disability due to he does not look like it. They can cause, this can cause a lot of stress and tension, not to mention increasing my son's difficulty with controlling his emotions in an appropriate way when we are confronted by someone with this. I am concerned about making sure that he is able to get from his drop-off point at the school to his classroom safely each day. With the amount of students that are moving through the halls, going to classrooms, the concern is that my son will become overstimulated and will not be able to accomplish this on his own. How can this be addressed where there are no, when there are no paraprofessionals assigned to the students individually? I want to begin working to create plans to address these things now rather than to wait when he starts school next year. These are not only concerns for my son, but for all the other special needs children in the districts, as the recent events at the not grade academy have shown us differently.
Did you ask her if she would email me a copy of that?
Ms. Langren, can you email a copy of that to?
I have a copy of you.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
I would like that, thank you. That's okay, I'll write that on there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Taylor.
College.
How are you? That's a former student. Her hair was blonde back then, though. Taylor, where did I, where did I have you? LJ Bell? PE? And the high school?
No, I remember I come to Richmond, but you have me LJ Bell.
Wow. I'm old, I'm old. Who was your favorite PE teacher ever, Taylor?
Keith McKenzie.
Oh, come on!
Paula York.
Thank you. And Gerard Morrison. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Counsel. Listeners. Dad. And beloved teachers. My name is Gerard Anthony Morrison from Hamlet, North Carolina, Charlotte Street. I'm the founder for the John Coltrane Music Edutainment Fest. Came up here a couple of times this year and down to the wire. Three weeks, three days, I'm an army man and a wake-up is what we do. Love to have you all there, love for you to spread the word within the infrastructure for the school system. So we go all aspects. We specialize in edutainment, not just entertainment. So that's why I'm more passionate about coming here always. This is our sixteenth year, sweet sixteenth. So we also have the fashion show component. So we're looking for talent, designers, models, artists, authors, poets, musicians, producers, singers, songwriters. We've got a lot of poets this year, you're gonna be really impressed. And then between the performances, we also deal with community issues, veterans issues, healthcare. The backstories is what I specialize in, we tell the backstories of it, just like Coltrane was born in Hamlet. The church I went to, St. Stevens Amy Zion, his maternal grandfather, Reverend W.W. Blair, was the preacher there. Right before him was Reverend Branch, whose son became the first black commissioned officer for the Marine Corps. So you see how all this stuff is interrelated. Also, tonight, I wanted to talk about the Rosenwall Schools. I'm just curious, who's familiar with the Rosenwall Schools? Because we had, I told four, still researching. One that really got my heart, I was talking to Daniel Kelly in Hoffman last year. And the Rosenwall School in Hoffman, when they were tearing it down, they used the lumber and everything to build the community center. So I was like, look at recycling right here. But October fifth, one minute on this.
One minute.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Time to run that fast. But October fifth, twelve noon, and we're stopping at five this year. We moved it up an hour because some of the, uh, our seasoned citizens told me that it's getting dark there, baby. They don't like being out after dark. And I said, alright, you got obliged. And, but, anytime you want some tours, you see the mural right here. You see the building, my grandfather TJ Higgins, Dr. McQueen and Dr. Wells. They bought the birthplace in their early eighties. And took his first breath, we want to make sure that we keep that inspiration going because inspire comes from Latin. Sparari means to breathe, in is internal, so inspiring people, wanting to join forces and help you, help us, help everybody. Enjoy that musical vibe. And I forgot the third thing.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you, good seeing you again Gerard.
Always, thank you.
The board chair declares there is a quorum of board members for the September tenth meeting, will the board please come to order? Will everybody please stand with me for a moment of silence? Have a really good friend, um, who's struggling a little bit right now, was a former, uh, you know, employee of Richmond County Schools, worked closely with him, Bobby Little. Um, he's not doing really well right now, so I just try to keep him, your thoughts and your prayers, and his wife Terry, so just thinking about that. Thank you. Please stand with me, pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, you have the minutes for the Board of Education open minutes for August thirteenth, the closed minutes for August thirteenth, and the Board of Education quarterly work session minutes for August twenty-seventh. Are there any changes needed to those minutes? If not, the chair entertains a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Baldwin. Seconded by Dr. Mr. Mason. Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Thank you. Dr. Farrell, are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Alright, so we will adopt the agenda consent of the board. And our first order of business will be a good old friend Reverend Mike Patrick. Mike, welcome tonight.
I hope I have this brand introduction.
Well, representing class of seventy-seven.
Absolutely. But first of all, good afternoon and, uh, delighted to be here, uh, before the board, Mr. Chairman of the Cabinet. I'm thankful that, uh, Richmond County Schools have brought on this ministerial council in which we are representing. As you can see behind me, we have only a few of us here, um, that's representing today. You know, our purpose is what we want to do is give support, spiritual support, uh, to the students as well as the staff and administration of Richmond County Schools. Uh, we find the need that we want to incorporate and implement some, some things that are taking place, uh, within the council. Because why, what you see here is the community of churches. And nine times out of ten, those students are attending our churches. So we want to make sure that, uh, when the school system, uh, need information to get out, then, uh, you, we would be part of the resource that you could use. Because why, everybody listens to announcements in churches. And with one thing that's coming up, September the tw- uh, twenty-fifth, is, uh, we want to, uh, do a prayer, prayer around the pole. And that it will be, uh, student, student-based land, obviously. And if anyone has any questions in regards to, uh, see you at the pole youth rally, uh, you can contact Mary Griffin and her number is nine one oh, nine nine five, zero four, seven three. This month is very crucial simply because this is a month that many of us, many of you have not thought about. And this gives us an opportunity that we pray for our students, we pray for the staff members, and we pray for administration because this month is really deemed as what, National Suicide Awareness Month. And you all know that it could take place anywhere. So we're praying, and as I spoke earlier to the group, that we'll be praying and fasting, uh, that, uh, those prayers will cover the Richmond County school system, that we will not experience anything of such, as such. Next month, October, is, uh, the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we want to make sure that our students are covered with that because, uh, in working with the schools, I find that there are just as many teenagers who are having domestic issues, domestic violence issues in relationships. So these are just some of the things that we, we've talked about, we will talk about, and we will move forward through prayer and fasting. Uh, at this particular time, I think it would be fitting if I was to ask each member of the council that's here if they will stand and introduce themselves at this time.
Jimmy Exchance Senior, Church of God in Christ South School of Springfield.
Special Pastor Linda Walsh, Pastor Baker's in the Outreach Ministry in Hamlet, and impact of faith in Long Beach. Pastor Paul Lett Walsh, Jesus Christ Church, University of North Carolina.
Pastor Morrie Carroll, Pastor Baker's in Outreach Ministry in Hamlet, North Carolina.
Pastor Tony Bennett, Mount Sinai Baptist Church, one seventy-one Brown Bridge Road, Rocky, Indiana, North Carolina.
Pastor Tom Sean, South Carolina Baptist Church.
Pastor Jack Lee, First Baptist Church.
Pastor Gary Riggins, This Place of Grace Church.
Steve Fielder, We Tell Us Else, The Rock, reaching our community.
Rodney Plain, Pastor Green Baptist Church.
Reverend Nathan Pitha, Pastor Forrestville, Amy Zion Church, and Miles Miller.
Tony Hodges, The Rock Church.
We represent the children and youth minister at First Baptist Church Department.
And this is what. Our meeting dates have been scheduled, uh, we will only meet, uh, quarterly. Our next meeting will be October the twenty-second, which is usually held here. Uh, and we invite any of you to come to be a part of us because we need to know what your concerns are as well. I'll bless you all and may help as well.
Mike, what time do y'all meet?
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
Uh, unless it changes from the district office.
Mike, it was fantastic seeing you. Thank you for all you're doing for our community.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
We'll give them a little time to get out of here.
Maybe we can tell Jerry to put his phone on mute?
Yes.
Hey Jerry? Jerry? Is it possible for you to put your phone on mute? Yes. Do you have a hard phone? Okay, and then if you need to say something, you just take it off mute, but we can hear the background voice going on where we were. Yes, that's better, thank you.
Okay, construction updates from Mr. Stephen King.
Good evening Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, members of the board. Just like to provide you some updates on our construction projects, starting with the high school. So the concrete for the second floor, uh, was poured this past week, uh, we had that floor finished. The last part of the, the roof system, the bar joists were installed, uh, end of last week, um, uh, on Thursday, Friday, and they finished up on Monday morning. Uh, the brick will actually start this coming Monday, around the perimeter of the building. Uh, the basement level, uh, ceiling, grid, tiles, lights, flooring, painting, all that was completed, um, down, that's the area in the existing, uh, gym basement where Coach Denton's office is at, we're doing some work down there. Uh, just in that corridor where outside is his, his office, that part was complete, um. So that, that project's coming along pretty, pretty good. They'll be finishing up the other two projects soon, so they'll be really concentrating, moving all their efforts to that project at the high school. Any questions on the high school? Fabry Heights Gym, um, the last of the two doors, we were waiting on exterior doors, were installed, um, this week. Uh, front canopy is work in progress, they're putting the roof on, electrical installed and lighting. Uh, interior painting, uh, just doing some finished touch-up stuff there. The saran tile on the bathrooms, floors, all the bathrooms are complete, um, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, um, trades are in there, just finishing up their, their stuff. Concrete, uh, for the front canopy will be, uh, and canopy and sidewalks, uh, concrete will start, uh, the end of next week. And then the sports flooring for the gym and the basketball goals and all that will, um, be installed by the end of this month. So that project's getting close. Then they'll finish the grading outside, around, around the perimeter of the building and, and seat and straw and everything. So that, that one will be coming along probably the mid, mid, mid-month, next month. Should be through with that one. Uh, any questions on Fabry Heights? Mental Springs, so they have about ten percent of the ceilings, interior ceilings left to put in. They're mainly in the bathrooms where all the plumbing was concentrated in a little corridor outside the bathroom. They just, they left that to the very last, let all the trades get finished. So they've got about ten percent of that left, left to put in. Uh, interior painting, they're just, and they're doing some touch-up work on that. The bathroom tile, walls, petitions, all the fixtures, the flooring, all that's in. Uh, the roofing's complete, uh, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing are doing their final trim-outs. Uh, and then they're testing the geothermal well, heating and air system now. So they're anticipating getting a CO on the building the twenty-fifth of this month. Uh, so pending, you know, everything passes inspection, they get a CO, we do a punch list, they complete a punch list. Uh, potentially, we, we could take possession of the building probably first of next month. So we've been in contact with Ms. May and plans are to try to move over a weekend, to move those classrooms from mobile units inside over a weekend because they need a little time to get stuff physically moved, set up the rooms. And then we'll be, um, planning a, a dedication ceremony for that at, at some point in time.
Are you gonna be helping them move, Steve, the maintenance department?
We will, the construction company has volunteered to, to have some of their labor to help, um, maintenance will move. I mean, you know, obviously the teachers that, that are, um, that will be moved, they'll, they'll be there just to kind of help, tell us where to place things, so they don't have to move it more than, you know, they need to. But we will, we'll do what, whatever it takes to get it moved.
Is there a legal issue with asking help from the community? Like sending a note home to parents that want to volunteer to help make that move?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because that was a tight-knit community.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
I know they will come out and help if you ask.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'll, I'll mention that, that, uh, Ms. May and the principal do, and yeah, I feel like we'll have, you know, it's five rooms and they were in mobile classrooms, so they can't, couldn't have had that much stuff, so.
Don't know how long they've been teaching.
Well, true. And I, I think they've been anticipating it, so they're, you know, I, I think it'll be a good, smooth transition.
And going back to, um, Fabry Heights Gym, so you say the middle of next month, it's kind of slowed up there, there, hadn't it?
Yeah, but, you know, about, um, contractual date, uh, completion, uh, final completion was November twelfth, so they're actually ahead of schedule. But yeah, that, that's gonna be a nice gym. Yep. Any more questions? Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Dr. Witherow.
Just got one little slide, that's all I've got. I just have the one, um, quick item tonight. Um, good evening, Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, members of the board. Local education agencies are subject to North Carolina procurement laws, and under the current uniform guidance requirements, an LEA that completes the annual self-certification may raise their micro purchase threshold of ten thousand dollars to either thirty or fifty thousand dollars, depending on whether they're talking about goods or services. Each year since 2020, Richmond County Schools has filed the self-certification. This increased threshold reduces the need to obtain competitive pricing quotes, um, from three or more vendors for relatively small purchases. At this time, I ask that the board approve the Richmond County Schools' self-certification of an increased micro purchase threshold for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So we need a motion for the increase in micro purchase threshold.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, make a motion, thank you, Beth.
I don't know what, that, that we, um, approve this, or, um, do the self-certification of an increased micro purchase threshold.
That's right, so get a, get a, get a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
So, uh, question, so, um, where's that, is that threshold now at ten thousand? What is the threshold currently?
The North Carolina threshold is generally ten thousand dollars, but each district can self-certify to raise it to thirty and fifty, which districts have been doing since 2020 with the influx of ESER funds.
And the board has approved this for the last four years, is that correct?
This is specific purchases need a federal fund, not all. Yes.
So we got a motion by Beth, seconded by Scotty. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Dr. Witherow.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's because of all the ESER money they had to, had to get rid of. Ms. Taylor.
Good evening Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, and members of the board. Um, tonight, I'm reporting to you our local testing program, two-year averages, and then I'm going to ask for your approval for our local testing program for the current year. In compliance with North Carolina General Statute one one five C dash one seven four dot one two D, Richmond County Schools will complete and submit a local testing program survey to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. In even-numbered years, North Carolina school districts are also required to report their two-year average number of tests administered and average testing times. If a district exceeds the state average in either one or both of those categories, then it is required to write and implement a plan to reduce the affected category. For the reporting years twenty-three and twenty-four, I'm pleased to show you what our numbers look like. North Carolina averaged sixty-nine point three tests administered, and Richmond County is below the state average at fifty-seven. The state average testing time allowed for that period was eighty-five point seven to Richmond County's sixty-four point five. So to sum up our two-year average report, we are below the state averages for number of local tests administered as well as for average testing time allowed. So no action planned to reduce our average, our averages is necessary. Now, we want to move on to the annual local testing survey. First, I will tell you what we do include in the survey and what is not included in our plan for local testing for twenty-four, twenty-five. Local testing does not include any federal testing like NAEP or state testing such as an end of course or an end of grade, or any kind of teacher-directed classroom testing such as a common assessment. But we do include any testing that is initiated by the district and implemented by the district. For twenty-four, twenty-five, our local testing program will include grades four through eight I-ready reading diagnostic, grades K through eight I-ready math diagnostic, and in grades four and five, we will also administer the M-class oral reading fluency and MACE. These last two that I referred to are M-class assessments, which measure reading processes for comprehension to support literacy and assess instructional levels. Finally, at grade two, students will take the cognitive abilities test, also known as the COGAP. It is a universal screener to identify AIG students. So at this time, I'd love to take any questions you might have and then ask you for your approval for our local testing plan for twenty-four, twenty-five.
So we need a motion to approve the local testing plan for twenty-four, twenty-five.
I must get a motion.
Got a motion by Ms. Rethridge, seconded by Mr. Mason, any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you.
I forgot Terry was on the phone. Where'd that come from? Ms. Jordan, budget amendments.
Good evening Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, and members of the board. Um, you should have before you on board docs, the, um, twenty-four, twenty-five budget resolution. Um, uh, in the state funds, you should have fifty-seven thousand, six ninety-eight, four eighty-four. That is actually a little bit of a decrease of two million, five thirty-two, seven ninety-nine, seventy from last year. We just have not received all of our state allotments yet. Actually, we've gotten a lot earlier this year, being about any of them year, they were really quick. Last year, we were November doing this. Um, local funds, um, this year, eleven thousand, nine oh four, two sixty-three.
Eleven million? You say eleven thousand, eleven million?
Eleven million, I'm sorry. Um, and you will notice on that one that I did, um, appropriate one point six million in fund balance back in November of twenty-two in a board work session. The board approved to appropriate six hundred thousand dollars towards the construction projects. So I had to put that in there, um, we hope not to have to use that, but I put it in there because the board approved for that. but I put it in there because the board approved for that to take place. Then the, um, the capital, the federal funds, there's nothing yet. We have not received any federal funding yet. That normally doesn't drop until, um, October. At right now, we're functioning, um, carryover funds. Um, capital outlay this year, um, is three million four twenty-nine zero zero zero. That is an increase of a million dollars from last year because also the board, um, in November of twenty-two voted to appropriate a million dollars in capital outlay to the projects, um, if we needed that. Um, school nutrition funds is the same as last year's, six million four fifty-five, six eighty-one. Other local funds is three million one seventy-five, seven thirty-one, ninety-one. That's a decrease. That's just we did not receive the nurse extender funding and we haven't received all those other funds yet. Um, right now, we are, and I I wanted to also draw your attention to, um, the last page. I added section fourteen. That was not in a previous budget amendment. Section fourteen says the Richmond County Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to transfer funds in accordance with General Statute one fifteen C four-three-three on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, to balance the budget to actual expenditures for the state, local, federal capital outlay, child nutrition trust agency and local special revenue funds. Um, I added this in, you know, June, our board meeting's typically before the end of June and we're doing a lot of moving at the end of June. And, you know, this year we had to email everybody to get approval. Um, this just allows Doctor Farrell to just move it within the same fund to, which is moving it between a five thousand series, six thousand purpose code, just to balance the budget. And then we would bring it to you for us, uh, for informational purposes after that. So I did add that. Um, I actually asked our auditor about that, um, and he recommended I add it to the budget resolution. So we're seeking board approval for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget resolution. Any questions?
When do you think you'll get the two, two, two five, two point five million from the state? When does, you said you got it early, the first one, social one?
Um, actually, we're just, we got a lot of PRCs. It's just, it'll actually be more than that. Um, because we just, there's some they just don't give till later. Um, they gave the, um, like, we're missing PRC twenty-nine, which is a EC fund, uh, sixty-three, which is EC funds. So there's, there's quite a few other funds that we just haven't got yet. Usually by October, November, actually another, um, eighty-five reading camp money. So there's actually a lot of them, the ones that are just a li, those are typically a little bit later anyway.
And the only other question I have is the six hundred thousand dollars, not to put you on the spot, but do you know where we are with that? Have we spent that money?
No.
For construction?
No, no, no. We have not spent that. ESER runs out, um, actually, there's a little over eight million dollars left in ESER.
Well, the six hundred thousand for construction that we gave.
We're not gonna use that until we, that's our last. We're the last. We gotta use the ESER first.
Right.
And then we're, we have appropriated, the board also appropriated to use that R and R fund, the capital fund. We actually have one point three million that the state holds in lottery funds now. Um, at the time, we only had five hundred thousand. So now we have one point three million of that. So we're hoping to use some of those funds before we go into our money. So we've actually been needing to kind of get a handle on where we are with, um, we're just at the mercy of billing and completion.
So you need a motion on the budget resolution for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the budget resolution for twenty-four, twenty-five as presented.
Got a motion from Mr. Baldwin? Second from Mr. Mason. Any discussion? All favored by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Don.
Okay, I'm up again.
Yep.
So right now you have before you contract number eleven from Exceptional Children's. Um, this is one they did not have yet signed back from the provider. This is a provider we've used in previous years for, which one is, um, two occupational therapists. It did go down a little bit from last year. It's for a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars this year.
So we need approval, uh, for their contract number eleven through AMN Healthcare Incorporated. Any motion?
Make a motion that we approve contract number eleven.
Motion from Mr. Tillman?
Second.
Second from Mr. Baldwin. Any discussion? All favored by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Is this the last one, hopefully, from EC?
No, I know they have one more. They have one more and it's, it's PCG and that's the provider we use for the MAC reimbursement. So actually, they get us the money that we pay them, so that helps.
Thank you.
Do we have two OTs now? Are there two?
Let's see. I don't want to jump order like I did before. Mister, Melvin Ingram, policies for approval.
Uh, greetings, Chairman Satterfield, Doctor Farrell, members of the board. In board docs, you have a list of policies presented last month for review. Uh, this being the conclusion of the thirty-day review period, I would like to present these policies for adoption. Thirteen-ten, forty-twenty, forty-oh-two, uh, parent parental involvement, thirty-four-sixty, graduation requirements, forty-two-forty, seventy-three-twelve, uh, child abuse and related threats to child safety, forty-two-seventy, sixty-one-forty-five concussion and head injury, fifty-seventy-one, seventy-three-fifty-one, electronically stored information retention, eighty-three-forty, insurance.
Sorry to ask a question, guys, but I got a question on the child abuse policy. Basically, um, I'm looking for it. They talked about making sure everybody was watching a video before, during the first part of school. Do we, of course, I know it's, it's going on, but do you have proof that it's going on? Is there agendas? Just because it's in the policy, I want to make sure that all schools are doing it. Does that make sense?
They are. It's part of vet the training.
Right, so.
And then there's also, um, another video that's coming out, just talking about grooming and things of that nature. Uh, but that's still, uh, in the planning stages.
Yeah, because it's part of the policy. It says every school has to watch a video, do all that stuff. I just want to make sure that that is going on in our schools. Same thing with the concussion policy, that all athletes have to watch. Remember, Darrell, when you coached, all athletes have to watch concussion policy. Just want to make sure that is going on, so we're not called out on it.
Yes, it's going on.
Has the Center for Safer Schools actually put out that video yet?
I got an email about that this week, um, and they said they, they have the video, um, but they're working on the supporting documents, um, that needs to go, need to go along with the video.
Well, no, in others, the legislature has said the Center for Safer Schools will be a lot, will do a lot of things that they've been kind of backed up in doing, so.
Are we okay with our policy, though?
I mean.
I think so.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll, we'll implement it as soon as the video is provided.
Yeah, we're still waiting. Hurry, hurry up and wait.
So you need a, uh, approval for all the policies that you just went over. Need a motion, right?
Yes, sir.
Need a, need a motion for approving all the policies. Got one by, uh, motion by Mr. Mason.
A second.
Second by Ms. Schorr. Any discussion? All favored by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Yeah, just, just roll with it, man.
I'll roll with it. In board docs, you should see, um, policy code, uh, thirty-two-twenty school, uh, trips. Uh, during our last board meeting, uh, there was a, a question raised by Chairman Satterfield, um, and, um, and the policy, um, was, uh, mentioned by our school board attorney, Ms. Dubson, um, about authorization of school trips. Um, and it reads, the principal and the student superintendent or designate must approve day school trips in advance. School trips that involve travel out of, of state and or overnight stay, um, or out of state, uh, travel must also receive prior approval from the superintendent or designate. And it says superintendent shall develop procedures, uh, for the request and approval, um, of school trips. Herefore, um, we've always brought, um, out-of-state field trips, overnight field trips for your approval. And I guess the question before you is how would you like for them to be handled? Would you like them to be, um, presented as, uh, information? Or would you like to continue to approve them, um, you know, during our board meetings?
Me personally, I feel like we should allow the superintendent and the principal to, to make the ruling on the field trip. And I would just like to see it in a Friday update every week. If there is something approved, I just think it kind of streamlines. It makes it a little easier for everyone and there's nothing reckless about it.
Any other comments? Huh? Yeah.
I don't feel strongly about it either way.
I've got, and Mr. Tillman, I know you had a comment about last time. I just, are you okay with that, or?
I, I, I mean, whatever. I just think that, um, I guess for me, I'd like to know. You know, I know we get updates on Friday, but I, I mean, I like to kind of know and have a, a say in that. But, I mean, whatever we decide, it'll be fine.
Well, is there a way that we could have a, a, just like what you give us now? Instead of putting it on the agenda, just giving it to us each month?
We can continue to do this.
Um, so we don't have to vote on it? You know, but I do think, I'm, I'm with Mr. Tillman. I think we do need to know. And I'm not sure that we've, I, since I've been on the board, we've never said no to a field trip. I don't know. Y'all have been all along with me, Mr. Mason, Mr. Tillman. Yeah, I don't know. So you need a.
I don't think we need a motion because that is the policy now, that it would be approved by the superintendent, so.
Okay.
And my thinking was, hopefully, um, our schools have planned well enough that I can tell you all in advance, like in a Friday, uh, superintendent's notes. But we've had, we have had some come up where it's next day. And so if that does happen, then I would, um, I would go ahead and shoot you all a text about that in a group, like I do in the past, so that my commitment to you is that we are not sending students outside this district, outside the state, outside overnight on a field trip that you all are not aware is taking place.
Yeah, we would definitely need to know that.
And so you'd like for them to be included on board docs, just like we, we're doing right now?
Well, it's just for information.
Okay.
You know, you could have it just right here, you know, just put it up at our desk so we know it. I don't think you have to put it on the agenda. You just put, just lay it up here.
Okay.
Now, since we did that, do we still have to, can we, do we have to just go ahead with the field trips now? Do we have to approve them, or are we just okay? Just say, here they are?
I think you could, I mean, superintendent, if you are, it's like, if you approve of all of the ones that are on the spreadsheet, that they could keep an information.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
They got you off the hook for one thing, Melvin.
There you go.
No policies for review?
No, that's a first. That's why he's happy. Board comments? Anybody like to start? Any comments?
Uh, let, let me start here. If you can't hear me.
All right, we got you, Jerry.
Um, I had the opportunity, I went to all schools, spent some time doing that, but one thing I want to say to, uh, everybody, how smooth things were going in every school and how nice every school looked. Uh, it made, made you proud to be, uh, a member of Richmond County Schools when you walked into the schools. They look as good as they do and then the staff and everybody working together as well as they are.
Thank you, Jerry.
That's it.
Thank you. I thought convocation was really, really good, you know. Doctor Farrell did it a different way this year, different place. They had fun, heard a lot of positive comments about that. So thank you and your staff for putting that on. Um, just a really good time seeing the teachers and the schools together with, some schools had the same color shirt on and just brings good vibes to start a good school year, so touche for, for, for that. So thank you very much for doing that. Any other comments? Doctor Farrell, superintendent's report.
So I was also going to say that we've had a successful start to the school year. Of course, anytime you're starting out a school year in an organization this size, you're gonna have some bumps along the way. But, um, our staff has worked really hard, our principals have worked hard and, um, teachers and other employees to make things, um, as smooth as possible. Implementing the, um, updated, uh, student attendance po, or student reassignment policy has gone a lot more smoothly, um, even than I had hoped, and so that's, um, that's a good thing. Um, fall sports are off and rolling. Um, if you haven't been in Raider Stadium since the work we did out there this summer, it looks really, really good out there, so go by and check that out. Sometimes middle school sports get a little bit, um, uh, neglected, but, um, we do have a football jamboree, uh, tomorrow evening and in Raider Stadium. And we have a volleyball jamboree on Thursday, starting at five-thirty. And the football jamboree's at six PM. Is that correct, Doctor Carter? Football jamboree's at six PM. Okay. So six PM tomorrow evening in Raider Stadium for football and then Thursday evening for volleyball at five-thirty. Um, then of course, home football Friday night against Myers Park. Um, and hopefully we will see you all there and that was my report for tonight.
Thank you, sir. So the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session under General Statute one-four-three, three-one-eight, eleven, A, three and six. Make a motion by Mr. Mason, second by Mr. Baldwin. Thank you. Discussion, all favored by saying aye? All opposed? We are in closed session.
And there's the, about five minutes.
Oh yeah. Have we started opening session?
Yep.
Okay, y'all ready?
Yep.
Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, members of the board. Before you on board dots as well as in front of you is a personnel report and an addendum. I'd like to ask for the board's approval at this time.
Need a motion for the personnel report presented.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Baldwin.
Second.
Second by Ms. Schuler. Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Dr. Isser.
Thank you.
Any other business?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would like to just kind of bring up attendance zones.
Yes, sir.
If we could kind of look at that and align it with our facility study. I think it would be something, I think that would be worth our time in looking at that.
I think it's a great idea. And if I'm not mistaken, and Joe, you might help me on this. But somebody from Raleigh can come down here and do that once we, you know, complete our facility study.
Yeah.
And we can have an outsider do it.
Right, NC State.
NC State would do it. So it kind of gets it out of our hands and let somebody who's professional at doing it do it.
They do, last I heard, have quite a weight.
They do. Well, we're still just in the beginning stages of our facility study.
Maybe that'll align well.
Thank you for doing that. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Got one by Mr. Baldwin.
Second.
Second by Ms. Schuler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Y'all have a great night. Thank y'all very much.